I didn't hear what you said.
What?
No.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah, I won't leave.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be rough.
I'll probably handle it.
(inaudible)
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 Now, I got a medical report. I need to go through that.
(inaudible)
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 I got it.
(inaudible)
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 Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now six o'clock. We were called to order the special meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. This is a special call meeting to hear the appeal to a previous decision by our Board of Planning and Zoning. And we welcome each one of you here tonight to participate in this process. And we will give anyone here, in a few minutes, anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this issue, for or against it, you will have an opportunity to speak. You will please come to the podium here at the microphone and introduce yourself by name and address for the minutes of our meeting. And we remind everyone that we are live on Facebook and YouTube, as all of our meetings are now. So, we welcome you to the process. And I will call on our county manager and our interim zoning administrator right now, Hal Johnson, who will present this matter to the board and to those of you that are in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one appeal tonight from a decision of the planning board. And this is an appeal to, where the planning board unanimously approved a rezoning. It was for a 10-acre tract, 10.01-acre tract on Whedon Street in Columbia Township outside of Staley. It's in a primary growth area for the county. It's currently zoned residential agricultural. And the rezoning request was to rezone the property to conventional subdivision overlay restricted. What that means is restricted against single-wide mobile homes. However, it would allow double-wide manufactured homes or modular or site-built homes. And this particular request is for double-wide manufactured homes. This is for a six-lot subdivision, as I mentioned, for Class A manufactured housing as per the site plan that was submitted to the planning department in review. The, this outlined in yellow there is the property itself that's under consideration. The little red dots that you see generally signify either site-built homes or double-wide manufactured homes or modular homes in the area. The blue area to the south is a light industrial operation that has been in existence for some time. This is the subdivision plan that was presented. It's six lots, all fronting on the state-maintained road, which is Whedon Street. All the proposed lots are in excess of an acre in size. There was some discussion at the planning board meeting about what watershed requirements are in this area. And these lot sizes exceed the requirements for being located in a watershed. The watershed only allows, allows you to have 40,000 square foot lots for single-family residences. And these are, as you can see, all in excess of an acre. Aerial photograph of the property, certainly across the street is some agricultural land. This backs up to various forms of residences. And here's some photographs of the land surrounding the site. Back in 2021, to the north, you'll see those off of Brooksdale Road. There was a rezoning there for a 10-lot subdivision, which is comparable to the requests that the board is considering tonight. I want to mention, just very briefly, some of the history that goes into subdivision rezoning requests. And Randolph County, back in 1989, had to count the years up, that was 34 years ago, was one of the first counties in North Carolina to require what we refer to as a major subdivision to go through a rezoning process. Up until, up until that time, in North Carolina and in counties, the, if you met the minimum lot size and you met the minimum road standards, subdivisions were approved through just a technical review instead of the public hearing process. But we received so many requests back then for subdivisions, major subdivisions, in areas that once were rural agricultural, that the Board of County Commissioners at that time brought major subdivision review under the rezoning category, which is meaning that the majority of land in Randolph County is currently zoned residential agricultural. And in a residential agricultural area, you can have by right what is defined as a minor subdivision. You can take your property and you can divide it up into three lots, and that's a minor subdivision. Once you go beyond that, over the years, the definition of what's a major subdivision's changed. At one time, it was five lots. If you develop more than five lots, that was a major subdivision, and you had to go through a rezoning process. What we found happening was there was a whole lot of five-acre, five-lot subdivisions being developed. So, the board reduced those number of lots for a minor subdivision to three. So, if you've got land and you're going to divide that land up into more than three lots to sell, then that becomes a major subdivision. And the, and that's, kicks in the rezoning process. During that process, we look at a lot of different factors in a subdivision. We look at, number one is, is the lot sizes. We have different standards depending on where that subdivision is located. In some areas of Randolph County, you'll recall, I said that this is in a primary growth area. Areas located around municipalities, corporate limits of those municipalities, but still is in the county, we call those primary growth areas because the mere fact of a city being located there caught, the reason the city's there, you're going to have more urban-type development, more residential-type development closer together. That's, that's why it's a city. And that impacts, to some degree, small areas outside those municipalities. This is located in a, in a primary growth area, where over time, we anticipate there will be changes in land use patterns in those areas. And this is a good example, this map that you see here. As I said, down at the bottom, you see industrial, commercial industrial property. You see subdivision development, and you see agricultural development, all within this, the framework of this, the map that we see. So, what the county does in, in the rezoning process, we look at that subdivision, and we see about lot sizes, does it meet the minimum lot size? But what made it special in Randolph County back in 1989, and it's still that way, does the housing characteristics of that major subdivision fit into the general, general characteristics of the community? Meaning, do you have owner-occupied, site-built, or, or single-family residence structures in that area? Is that the primary type of land use in the area? And in this area, generally, you see that. You see subdivisions, and you see site-built, or you see single-family residential development in this area. And I will say that in 1989, when the county began this process, we were, we were actually the first county in North Carolina. The other counties saw what we were doing, and now it's almost accepted practice in North Carolina. I think, Mr. Chairman, I do want to say that it's ironic that the request that's before the board tonight on appeal, if legislation that is being considered in Raleigh right now is ultimately approved, this would be taken out of the hands of the county planning board and the county commissioners, and is a development that would be approved by right, by state law, in North Carolina. So, I just wanted to mention that. I'm proud of what Randolph County has done over the last decades in land use planning and development. And I hope that that right is not taken away from the local elected officials. So, Mr. Chairman, that's a review of the request that's before the board tonight. I know Mr. Eric Davis is the proposed developer, and he's here to answer any questions on the development.
Thank you. Any questions of Hal? Any commissioner have any questions? I will say, just to follow up on Hal's point, the proposed change in, in the zoning authority is, in itself, relates, even as it relates to this question here, it, that's alarming that they take it away from local government, folks that are here tonight to go through this process, and the state would make the decision. That also sets a serious precedent for going forward relative to local governments in North Carolina. So, I hope that, I know we will follow it and hope that you will do the same as, as that legislation moves forward. It has been introduced in both the House and the Senate, and State and the General Assembly. So, we're keeping an eye on that. So, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And as for those, Eric, would you want, you want, anything you want to say tonight for your development? Well, look, we'll go to you there.
And I'll say, Mr. Chairman, the, the order of the process that we normally follow, we followed this at the previous meeting, and this is what we do. And the planning board and the Board of Adjustment is that the applicant goes first, provides whatever presentation they want to, and then those, anyone who's in opposition gets the opportunity to speak. And then we, the applicant gets a, a brief summary, usually to try to answer any questions if he or she chooses to do so at the end. And so, as, I would remind this board, as anyone comes forward, if you have questions for them, it's probably best to ask those questions while they're in front of you.
All right.
Okay. I have some pictures of the homes that we typically build. If I may approach the board, I can pass these out if, if you want to do that.
Eric, these pictures are what you're proposing?
Yes. This is a pipeline. We're, 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 by, by.
I think it was, it was. It's the same.
You won't clear the record. Okay. Thank you.
So, you want the, the?
And for the record, are there two photographs, is that what we have?
There's two photographs, yes.
There's two photographs, so there's two photographs that will be made a part of the record.
So, these homes are brand-new Clayton Homes. They tend to be around 1,400 to 1,600 square feet. Come with a one-year warranty from the manufacturer. These homes range, they've actually increased. At last board, I said they were around 200,000, but now we're up close to 230,000 on some of these homes. So, they are selling well. They would fit the, the needs of the mega-site for the blue-collar worker or anyone else in the area. And there is a shortage of homes. I'm a real estate broker, and as soon as we're putting these on the market, we're usually getting contracts within one or two days, which is a lot better than it was at the last hearing I was at. It was more of a 10- to 15-day medium before homes enter contract. There is a church, some, a couple of things that were mentioned at the last hearing of concerns. And someone spoke, but I don't think, at the time, there's anyone here from the church. But there's a church at the back right corner. And I'd love to leave some woods or some kind of bear there. I respect for the church, to give them their privacy. And they, most, what we intend on clearing is just enough for the subject, the well, and the home. So, we don't intend to clear-cut the lot, just, just enough to make it where we can get a nice home there. But as you can see from the pictures, these are nice houses. I showed it, I actually, a Realtor the other day that showed it, put in her contract, said she couldn't tell the difference between it and a modular home. Or, I'm sorry, a off-frame mod, on the inside, anyway. She said these have really come a long ways over the years. So, I'm just trying to make more housing to meet the demand for that area. And I did the homes on Brooksdale. I did eight lots over there. We've already built them, five of those. And we have remaining three that we're going to start in the next couple of weeks. But if you look at Brooksdale and the adjacent road, I can't see the name up from here, but they're all similar-sized lots to what we're proposing here. These are actually bigger lots, so it should give a little more privacy. The DOT did mention, when I got permission for the driveway permits, that they wanted a driveway per every 200 feet. So, our compromise was to put each lot, a driveway side by side. However, Daniel at Carolina Survey, and he and I had had a discussion, he's been trying to reach out to DOT since December about this law. And maybe y'all are aware, maybe you're not, but they've never been able to produce any type of written documentation or law saying that, that that is an actual, but in order to comply, we agreed to do so.
Mr. Davis, you are the developer.
Yes, sir.
You're not going to sell lots.
I, I'm the developer and the builder. So, and setup contractor. So, we basically take the lots, dig the footings, build the homes, and set them up. And then I'm also the broker, so I list them.
Have you had preliminary soil evaluations done for each of the?
Yes, I have. And the soil was really good there, and it was suffice for six homes with three bedrooms each.
Make sure I'm understanding on the driveway, you do have driveway permits?
We had approval. I haven't, actually, I don't have my hand, but I did meet with them in person at the DOT. And she said, I don't remember at the time, I've got the email, but she did give permission to do that, as long as we put them side by side. So, every two lots would have combined driveways, at least adjacent to each other. And that would help with the traffic flow.
Other questions?
But there'll be room for someone to pull out into the traffic.
Yes, we'll do turnarounds beside the homes, so they can back into a turnaround area and, and pull out forward, so they don't have to back out to the main road.
Other questions?
Yeah, hold on just a minute. I'm writing. I don't multitask very well. I noticed that in here, in reading the material, that you were not going to be burning the debris?
That, that's part of the guidelines.
Right.
It must be out of.
All right. And so, you had mentioned some options, but nothing was specified. What, how, do you know what you'll be doing with the?
With the debris?
Yes, that you, that you've cleared?
There's a pulpwood facility. At the time, we were going, before zoning, we were going to burn, but now we can't. So, but there's a pulpwood facility nearby, there, the BIS pulpwood. I think we'll be able to truck it over there and get, dispose of it that way.
Okay, so you will not be doing windrows?
No.
Okay.
Other questions? Do you have any more? Oh, you have any more?
I'm the question asker. Thank you. No, I think that covers it for right now. Thank you.
Any other question?
Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in support of this request? Anyone here wishes to speak against the request? I know that Margaret Dunn is the one who filed the appeal.
My name's Keith Burgeal. I live at 3450 Whedon Street. I live right next to the lot you just bought.
I'm speaking to the microphone, please.
I'm that dot right there. The first dot, right next to the guy doing the yellow dot right there. I'm that house. I moved out there to get away from people. Can't stand people, don't like neighbors, you know? Hey, I'm being honest.
Mr. Virgil, just, just.
I just want.
Direct, Mr. Virgil.
I want to know, like, you're saying.
Mr. Virgil.
Burgeal.
I'm sorry.
Burgeal.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
If you'll just direct your comments to us, please, sir.
Question is, is he building homes, or is he buying mobile homes and putting them in there? Are they mobile homes, or are they, or is he building? Because he said he built the homes. When you get a mobile home, all you do is pull it in with a truck, and you put the roof together and the floor and the walls inside. That's, that's a manufactured home. I've talked to my marketing people, too. My price, the value of my home is going to depreciate because of the mobile homes. When you have mobile homes in that area, and you have a stick-built house, the value of your home depreciates. I mean, that's, that's just, that's common sense, and that's the way it is. You know, I have no trespassing signs all the way up and down my property, okay? The surveying crew he done had out there was already 50 feet in my yard, doing whatever it is they want to do, because they don't have to abide by no trespassing signs, I guess, that don't apply to them. I've had realtors down there in my yards. That wasn't from him, but I've had realtors from the property next to my house. People just walking to my property with no trespassing signs. I mean, I got dead li, I got a dead tree that fell off his property that's laying across my property, destroying some of my trees that's already fell. Ain't nothing been done about that either, you know? I don't, I don't appreciate, I, I just, I don't, I don't approve of this at all. I mean, I have peace and quiet, I have tranquility, I get away from everybody. I bust my back, my wife bust her back every day to buy this property, because there's nobody around us, you know? This guy wants to come in and put six houses in a little 10-acre lot. I mean, they're going to be right in my yard. I mean, right at my yard. No privacy. I'll have maybe five feet of woods right there, that's my woods, and then the rest is going to be completely gone. Everything's going to be gone. I mean, everything is going to be gone. It's going to be horrible. I don't want to have neighbors. I don't want to be around anybody. That's why I spent the money I spent to get the property I got. But I mean, I know it doesn't matter to anybody. I mean, it really doesn't, but it matters to me, you know? That's my house, that's my domain. I mean, and I got trail cams all up and down my property. I don't want to see any contractors coming on my land. I don't want to see any workers coming on my land. Nothing. Nothing. At all. They will be prosecuted. I don't care who it is. I mean, that's my right. Correct? No trespassing means no trespassing. Stay off my property. But apparently, surveyor crews and everybody else can just do what they want. If that's what I'm going to have to deal with, then we're going to have issues. I mean, that's just the way it is. You know? But I, I, this is ridiculous. This is just ridiculous, man. I know what I'm saying is a waste of my breath. I'm sure you already got your approval. This is just a waste of our time. But I had to speak my mind. I wasn't able to come last time. This just, this is horrible. This is horrible. But, whatever. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Virgil. Please sign in. Hello. Carol Lobraser, 1395 Langley Road in Staley. I was here last time, and what I remember is the, the survey did not include the power easement. Do we have an updated survey that has the power easement? I, I agree, there's a development right behind him that's level lot and all-clear and on a much slower side street. And, and it's much more, you know, the driveways are even. Have you actually driven on this road? It is 55 mile-an-hour speed limit, okay? So, it's, it's pretty tight, and you're going to put six driveways. And the power easement, I think, is 100 feet? So, somebody's going to buy, I mean, are we an opportunist where we're actually going to let a resident buy a property with 100-foot easement, power line easement on their property? So, I mean, I understand development. I just always have felt that six was too much for this lot. Just, we want to develop, but it has to look good, it has to feel good, it has to match the houses and the rest of the area. So, if I point to that sign, I see a side street, and I see lots of small lots, and they're older, okay? And then I see, you know, one-acre lots that are newer, and they, they look okay. I'm with, I'm with the gentleman here. I prefer stick-built, because I think, I think we want to see the county grow nicely, okay? We don't want to be opportunists, and let's just slap quick houses and make quick money. And yes, the value's going to go up, because there's nothing else out there. We're not stupid. Okay? But, um, but you know, it just, it just doesn't seem like it's really going to look that well. And it's, and not to take anything away, it's not, I think he's done a better job with the development on the side street than this one. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Nixon, resident Staley. Forty-three years. So, I just want to reiterate what Carol just said. You know, we've got growth, growth coming in from Toyota and Wolf Speed on both sides of Staley. And Staley's an old town. I mean, a lot of stick-built houses, a lot of the folks, they're lifetime residents there, and don't see a big problem, you know, with maybe putting, you know, one or two in. But shoving six in in a small area like that, we have several truck, trucking companies that travel that road. And just for safety aspect, I would like to see the number at least lowered to possibly three. Just for that, you know, for school bus. But another thing, too, is, you know, when somebody presents mobile homes for sale, first buyers, usually are great, they take care of the place, no crime. But it's the second, and the third, and the fourth homeowners that come into these mobile homes that the sheriff's office is constantly coming out. Staley Cove is a great example. I don't have the law logs, anything to pull. How many times the sheriff's office has gone in there for domestic violence, drug use? So, just trying to look, you know, towards the future. Since we do have great companies coming into town, we'd like to offer, you know, nice residential places for them and not turn it into a trailer park corner of the county. So, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Travis Pugh. I was here the last time before, and I own the property due south there. Also own a little corner that joins the development. And as I said before, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not against development. I understand that. I am, I'll have to say it again, I'm very biased, because I am a farmer.
I'm very biased because I am a farmer. I'm like a living farmer. With that being said, when you take a lot of those dots to the due north, and it was mentioned here the last time, if, if to control it, I should own it, okay? I did not know that land was for sale until it was gone. I didn't know that land was for sale until it was sold. With that being said, I worked with a large dairyman named Arnd Koopman. One of, one of the biggest dairy farmers around here that I'm aware of. Most of you probably know him. Arnd Koopman and myself are trying to buy these tracts of land when we know about them at development price. And I know y'all say we're in primary growth. I understand that. But remember what this county was based on? What it was founded on? What this country was founded on? Agriculture. What are we going to do when we can't feed ourselves anymore? That's my question tonight. No disrespect to Mr. Davis whatsoever. I do understand, but at the same time, you could take a lot of those dots out if the neighborhood had have been known and aware of what was going on. To this day, Mr. Koopman looked at it. When he called, it was already broke up. So what I'm trying to say tonight is, is this got by the neighborhood. Our neighborhood is, you know, hey, you want to put one or two homes in there? We're good with it. We're not looking for another development. So I've got skin in this game, if you will. And had it, but had I known, this wouldn't be a problem tonight. We were never aware of what he wanted to do. He said there was a meeting. There was no meeting ever called. That's all I'm saying. There's, I'm not calling anybody a liar in any way, but nobody was ever made aware of what was going on. Let's cut it back. That's all I'm asking. Let's cut it back. Thank you.
I, I would just comment to that. As Mr. Johnson pointed out, he, he could put three of anything he wants to on there without going through this process.
May I speak again, sir?
Sure, sure.
And I understand that. And I, I, you know, I can't speak for everybody else, but you know, three's better than six. And I really think that would kind of fit because there again, if you look at those houses on that other road, they've, they've been there, well, a lot of them have, have already gone down. But this, this, this neighborhood has not developed over the last ten years. There's been two homes put in over there for the most part over the last ten, fifteen years. Everything has stayed the same. And I understand progress. I really do, ladies and gentlemen. I understand progress. But at the same time, give the good old boy opportunities. At some point, if his money's just as good as everybody else and if we can hold progress off by buying it, we'll try to buy the dag gum place. I don't, I know I'm just country terms, but I'm being, being straight. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hello. I think most everybody here already knows me. Margaret Dunn, formerly Margaret Dunn, but I go by Maggie Dunn. So I am the, the person that submitted the appeal, okay, to this, to this development here. I would expect that most of you are most familiar with the appeal that I put in and the, the intimate details of that appeal. Couple of things I'd like to mention, then some of that's already been mentioned here, is the particular ten-point-something acres that, that was presented here on the, in March, here on the seventh of March, never depicted. And I know Mr. Johnson has already highlighted that the watershed has no impact on the development of that ten-point-something acres. However, the power easement that I got from the clerk of court, that was not depicted and it's still not depicted on the, on this property, which severely limits the road frontage and, and the number of lots that most of us think are reasonable for this location, but still to this day, not depicted in what, what we have here with, that Mr. Davis is presenting. Not sure why that is. But moving on, I, there are a number of concerns here for the community. I've already addressed the watershed, the power easement. Then, let me see. The transportation and the safety issue was already addressed. I'm not sure whether, how, or how many of you, okay, sitting here commissioners have been out on Weeden Street and seen the location that we're talking about. But I can tell you, if you come off of forty-nine and you're heading towards downtown Staley and you, you're coming down forty-nine, you take a left on Weeden and as you come up this road and you get to Mr., he just left, Baggio's house, okay? This road is in a low portion and you come up to Mr. Baggio who left, who's obviously disturbed with what's going on. You can't even see that ten acres that Mr. Davis is developing, okay? So you're going to crest that location and then be dead into six places, six, six driveways or three driveways that are right there in a blind spot on Weeden. So it's a safety requirement. And I've already actually talked to this, Mr., I think it's Low, from the DOT who gave the safety analysis for the original property that went before the board, okay? He said that I should take notes of how many wrecks occur there and then report it to the board. That's not how we should work in terms of safety. We should be proactive, not reactive to a safety requirement. So I'm not sure if anybody sitting here, commissioners, has been out to that location, but it's actually very, very dangerous, okay? And, and I drive two vehicles. I drive a four-fifty duly, so it doesn't matter how high you're sitting in that four-fifty duly or in your my hoop, in my hoopde, which is a little Ford Edge, as I crest, okay, Weeden Street and head into where this development is going. I'm telling you right now, it's dangerous. We need to look at that. Moving on to a couple of other issues here. So the safety issue. Let me see. We already addressed the fact that these manufactured houses do not meet HUD requirements. So those of us who have skin in the game and are vested interested in, in Staley, who have nice property and nice homes, are not interested in manufactured homes to boost our value. Why? Because it's not going to boost our value. I know that. You know that. And everybody sitting over here within the community knows that as well. Next issue. Long-term development for Randolph County. Obviously, we're an agricultural county. North Carolina in terms of Randolph County alone. The state of North Carolina is number one in beef and corn, number two in dairy, number six in poultry, number six in hay. Just in Randolph County alone, we're number one in, in the country for tobacco, sweet potatoes, number two in the hockey, oh, excuse me, hogs and turkey, okay? So those of us who are living in Randolph County have a long-term interest in what's happening in Randolph County and the way ahead for, for North Carolina. And if those of you sitting here right now don't have our vested interest, then perhaps you don't need to be here. That's all I am. So, I mean, I'm not, we, we know going on right now in, in the country, okay? We're in a crisis in terms of agricultural food production and the way ahead for, oh, is China going to feed us? I don't know, okay? But let's hope not. So we need to be committed to North Carolina and, and certainly Randolph County since we're such a large producer of agricultural efforts here, here in not only the country, but North Carolina. I have, I submitted fifty-five affidavits from our small community of just over three hundred people in Staley. I submitted with my appeal fifty-five affidavits from people who live in Staley who are interested in this, this development and where we're going, okay, in Staley. Fifty-five I submitted on the seventh of March. I have another fifty-one with me right now. And I can tell you, if I, if I didn't have an actual real job, I, I could have every person or just about in Staley sign an affidavit. But unfortunately, I don't have that kind of time. So, um, let me see. I, I want to thank you for allowing me to be part of this process. I hope you've listened to the, to, to my voice along with, with the other folks that have, have been here and spoke. Obviously, we're concerned about, about our community. We're concerned about the way ahead. We're, I want to thank you for tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting down here at Eastern Randolph to talk about the development of Staley, the development of Randolph County and what's ahead for us as, as a county. So I, I hope you hear our voices and, 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 how about have some mercy on us, okay? Mr. Davis, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to you offering housing for, for, for folks. He said the last time we were here, not everybody can afford a half a million dollar house. I certainly never could afford a half a million dollar house. I was a private in the army and I lived in a single wide trailer here in Randolph County for seven years before I could build a house. So I'm all about, I'm all about housing, okay, for, for folks. That's, that's a good thing, okay? But I, I, Mr. Nixon already addressed, certain, certain housing brings in all kinds of crime, okay, to, to, to our county as well. And I, we're looking at reasonable housing. We like stick-built, but if we can't have stick-built, then we certainly think a reasonable footprint of ten acres with, with ample buffer, okay, for the church, for ample buffer for Mr. Bergio who lives next door. And none of that was addressed, okay? It was almost like overlooked at the, the last meeting on, if, if Mr. Bergio is going to get a certain buffer, if the church is going to get a certain buffer, okay? Then that needs to be in writing. One of the things that Mr. Pugh addressed was, was transparency and the fact that nobody knew what was happening on Brooksdale Road, okay, until after the fact. I can tell you right now, I filed the appeal here shortly after the seventh of March. I combed the neighborhood. I went to the church. I knew Mr. Pugh was a, was a, a landowner next to the property. The only person that got notification of this appeal was Mr. Bergio. I didn't even get it in writing that, that, of this meeting today, okay, until I got it from Mr. Bergio and he gave me a copy of the notice that he got from you. So Mr. Pugh, who is a landowner, me, who hired the appeal or filed the appeal, never got notified. So Mr. Pugh has already addressed that we have a problem with transparency in this community that we don't know what's going on until after the fact, after the developer has already bought, bought the property and we're already behind the power curve trying to catch up. I'm interested to be an investor in his partnership with buying up agricultural land in Staley and Randolph County, if he wants to partner with me. But if we don't know about it, then we don't know as a community to do anything about it. It's just like Brooksdale. We didn't know that that was going into a development until it was already done. So we have a problem with notifying people within the community with what's going on. So I encourage you as county commissioners with, with the distrust that we have with the federal government, and you don't need to talk to me about distrust with federal government. I work for an agency that is under the microscope. However, we have distrust in the federal government. We have distrust in our local government. And when we don't get notified, such as even something as simple as this, okay? All that does is give more distrust to the community that our public officials, our local officials, aren't doing us right. So I thank you. I thank you for the opportunity. And I, and I, you know, God bless Mr. Davis for trying to provide appropriate housing for, for folks in the community. And, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a quick question. Whose responsibility is it to notify neighborhoods when there's something like this? Is that?
This account.
All right, but, okay, so what, what, our planning department?
The planning department.
Okay.
What you're asking is the breadth of the notification?
Yes.
So the, the notifications that go out and how, and you tell me if I'm wrong, but the property is posted, there's signs that are placed. Every adjacent property owner, and that means a property owner whose property line touches the applicant, is notified in writing. It's advertised on our website. That happens in every, every rezoning case.
Okay, and they're notified in writing if their property touches?
Is adjacent to.
Okay.
Somebody correct me if that's, I mean, because I don't send out those notices.
So any of these?
Yeah, I think.
Right here. These.
Say that, say that, sir. What?
Was the sign put up the next day? It was on the ground. Nobody could see it.
Okay, if that sign was taken down, I mean, there's, we, the county goes out and puts signs up on, and I, I hear you that they get taken down.
Best practices, you know, you're talking about counties. Guilford County's sign is this big, with a big Z red resounding. Randolph County has a little A there, quite a lot of sign on it. So best practices, consider if there is going to be a ton of changes, help, help motivate people. I think that's what Maggie was trying to say.
That's a good suggestion.
Guys, guys, we're, we're going to, we're going to take people, if you want to come and speak, because, because we record this and because we're also online, we need to speak from the podium. If you want to come back up and speak, you can, but.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name's Bill Scott and I live at eighteen thirty-nine Browns Cross Road. I've got a few comments about this. Mr. Johnson said, you know, we've been zoning like this for, since nineteen eighty-nine. But if you'll look where the yellow is and right in front of it, it's all agriculture. And behind it, it is very highly developed. I agree with him. And he, he, he did that other deal on two acres and he's trying to do these on a hundred, excuse me, excuse me, on two hundred foot. But he's trying to do this on a hundred foot. Look at this room. It's about a hundred foot. And that's putting people mighty close together. And then you're going to put them sharing the same driveway? Oh, no. By the time the wives don't get along or the youngins don't get along, you've got a recipe that I ain't going to tell you where it was made at, but it ain't good. I just don't think it's a real good idea. And like I said, if you, if you have drove down And like I said, if you, if you have drove down through there, six double wides in there does not fit the area at all. It's, it's not gonna be good for it. And like the lady said, a lot of folks in the church had no idea about it, because, you know, you had a sign this big in the weeds, in the weeds. And this is for the whole zoning deal, Mr. Johnson. You need something bigger and to show it. And I know that we have been, since nineteen eighty-nine, we have been doing this on zoning with forty thousand square feet. Is that not correct? We have made some mighty big messes, mighty big messes throughout the county. They're not all messes, but there's a lot of them. So that's my two cents worth, gentlemen, and thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last comment. Sorry about that. One last comment. I know Mr. Johnson keeps talking about all the manufacturing down in Staley. There is no manufacturing down in Staley. It is the old pallet company down there that's like got six people working for it, that's been there for a hundred years, or, or at least, what, the forties or something? And then there is a, a furniture place down there that used to be the old Wright Furniture from another hundred years ago, that does, like, paints the front end of, of bumpers now and sends it out. So it, Staley is not the booming metropolis. If somebody would get in their car and come down and take a look at it, okay, all we've got is the Main Street Grill and, and, you know, a couple of places that are called manufacturing that have six people working for them. It is not a booming metropolis down there. So I, I invite everybody on, on the commission here, the county commission, to come on down to Staley and see what a booming metropolis it is, and then you understand where we're coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else who's here to speak tonight?
I'll, I'll just, I'll make it clear what I said earlier about the signs.
I think Mr. Scott made that clear, about bigger signs.
Yes.
Yep, we'll take it under advisement.
I've made a note. All right. Hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Wait, before I do, are they sharing driveways?
The driveways are adjacent, but they're not shared. We're talking a lot about the driveways. They said we could build together and make down our driveways. They just want the side.
But there's no shared easements or something?
No, they share, don't own the driveway.
And what about the power lines?
The power lines, each property has its own way for it. So there's no power lines in the car, so everybody's...
I think he's talking about the...
I'm telling him about the, the power, the power line easement.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, can you come up and speak from the podium, please?
The power line property is a, a bigger parcel, and Survey Carolina designed that on purpose to make it bigger, to include the easements for the power line. That's why it's, it's over two acres, two point eight nine, or something of that nature.
So where does it go?
The power lines, it's actually on that survey.
On that one, on that one, on this one property?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's plenty of land.
Where would you site the, the house on that?
To the right of the, the power line easement.
In that little triangle?
Yes, but closer to the road, 'cause I would wanna give the church, you know, some buffer zone.
Have you done any stick-built developments?
Yes, I'm a licensed shearing contractor, and I built a lot in two thousand five through two thousand eight, so the economy, you know, suffered from it.
But you didn't consider that for this site?
No, because affordable housing is, in my opinion, is, is what's very much needed for this area, and it shows by the days on market. These homes are not trailer parks. They're, they're nice with brick underpinning. They're built to high standards. They are inspected by HUD. They do have a HUD label. They are, they do bring it back to the neighborhood. You see the pictures, and they're not your typical nineteen eighty double wide. You know, I, I know that some people don't want change, and some people don't want development. I understand that, and I respect that. But if we can't build homes here, where are we gonna build them? And if you look at the neighborhood, the zoning on the adjacent streets, those are manufactured homes on both streets, Brooksdale and the one adjacent to this parcel. I was thinking it's something golly or wily. But it's, it does comply with the, the neighborhood. There is some industrial. There was unanimous decision at the last hearing, no one was against on the council, everyone was for it. Again, I, I wish I could appease and make everyone happy, but the, the fact is, you know, we can't. But if we don't build here, where do we build? And I think it's gonna go right in line with the, you know, the mega site and other things that are coming about in that area.
I have a question. Have you finished your question? So you've mentioned it a couple times, I think, in your comments, and it was mentioned by the other folks, the church that sits there, I guess to the right side of our picture here, whatever.
Yes.
And you mentioned some setbacks or some kind of buffer or whatever for, for them.
Sure.
Is that, it's not necessarily in the plan, right?
It's not in the plan. That's just something that was mentioned at last council meeting, and I had time to reflect on it, and, and I thought, sure, that'd be an honorable thing to do, give them some buffer. I'm not sure how much I can allow because of the septic system, it depends how that goes in the well, but I'm sure there'll be room to, in that two point, I believe it's eight acres, to, to definitely leave them some buffer.
Yeah, that's one of the larger lots, isn't it?
Yes, it's the largest lot in the track, that's correct.
And I know that currently, when you go by the charts, there are trees behind it, you can't see this.
Yes.
Because I almost drove around behind it, but they had the two drives blocked, roped off, and so I just thought, well, I'm not gonna drive around behind it. They obviously don't want people pulling in there. But I just noticed that, looking behind the church, excuse me, you currently see trees, so...
Yes. I only need enough to put the home and do the well and septic. I think most people would probably like the privacy, and the homeowner would as well. So, yeah, I think it's sacrilegious, and it would be the, the right thing to do for, for the church, and as far as looks, to, you know, leave some trees in the back.
So you'd have to put it within the dash lines, I'm assuming that's the buildable area?
Are you referring to Lot Six?
Lot Six.
Yes.
Is that gonna give you enough room for well and septic and a buffer?
Yes, we've looked at that survey.
On this side of the power line?
Yes.
'Cause I'm assuming you wouldn't wanna...
If I had to, I could pump underneath the power line to the, the upper side, if I have a pump system on the septic tank. So if I needed more room, I could just, I can cross the septic system and get to the other side. Is that what you're referring, am I answering my question correctly?
Yeah, yeah. That other, in other words, with that easement across there, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I don't know what you can do as far as...
I have past experience to, to where we can do something like that. We can build drives, we're mainly worried about structures.
But each lot has its own septic system?
Yes, independently, yes.
Other questions, board?
A couple of the, like, back on, you know, where these are. A couple of these are still for sale.
I've got three up for sale. Two of those are under contract. Let me rephrase, I have two up for sale. They're both under contract, had contracts within two to three days. We are working on the third one, and the sign will go up by the end of this week. I actually already have a couple brokers that are saying, please let us have first, you know, look at it before you...
I just had seen the sign out and...
Yes, so two are sold, two are under contract, and one isn't listed yet. So they are quite a bit of demand. And some of these homes I built two or three years ago, I say built, I, I can, I put them together as a setup contractor, Clayton, they are Clayton Homes. Back two, three years ago, they were selling for around one sixty, and now those same homes even used will bring over two hundred thousand dollars. I actually saw one on Henley Country Road on the MLS that was a late nineties model, under fifteen hundred square foot, that brought two hundred fourteen thousand back in November. So, you know, the way of old thinking might be old thinking. These homes are appreciating with, and that might be due to inflation or other issues, but they are going up in value.
What's, what's the, what length?
The homes are usually twenty-eight feet, well, I guess from the road front, it's about fifty-six, and then twenty-eight feet in depth. So twenty-eight by fifty-six are typically, some are a little bit bigger.
So you do some...
That would be the smallest size. They can, they can go up from that.
'Cause you got about a hundred feet or so.
Yes.
A little more than that.
And the lots on Brooksdale that I developed, they were not two hundred feet lots, they were more like hundred and twenty-five.
Other questions? Am I to understand the, on the buffer, how, I don't think I've heard the, what size buffer you're talking about?
Um, I haven't measured it. I would, just if you wanted to put something on the record, I would say we could at least do twenty-five feet to start. If I can do fifty or more, I'd be glad to. But I could do a minimum of twenty-five feet.
That would be on that...
And leave all the vegetation that's currently there there.
That'd be on that larger track.
Mm-hmm. I would, but I'll leave as much as I possibly can. It's no benefit to me to clear the whole lot.
And you do have some of these lots already sold or under contract?
No, I haven't listed anything because I didn't know how to...
None of them have been listed.
I'm sorry?
None of them have been...
No, 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 they're listed currently, no.
But you started clearing?
We started to clear.
'Cause I could see it.
Yes, we did, and it was pretty rainy season, so we pulled off and went to another job. It was pretty wet in there.
But you would accept a twenty-five foot buffer?
Yeah, I would have said a twenty-five foot buffer.
On that one border? Yes.
On the...
What would you call that?
On the east and west?
On the east?
On, I'm not sure of the direction on that ledge, but to the, if you're facing it from Weeden, be on the right side, next to the church.
How about next to the house of the gentleman that spoke tonight, on that side?
I don't think that's gonna be feasible, 'cause I believe that's, I don't have the survey, but I believe it's a hundred foot lot. And I don't think if I did that, the, the lot would even be buildable at that point.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? All right.
All right, thank you.
Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and come to the board for discussion, motions on the requests.
Well, it's in, in my neck of the woods. And I do empathize with, I mean, I live in north of there, and it's gonna be a lot of industrialization, industrialization, commercialization, whether we like it or I did ride out there yesterday, I knew, I knew the area anyway. Staley Parade lines up right in front of this, this property, so I spent a little time in front of it. But there are some issues with the, the site views along the, the road there. I, I don't think they're catastrophic, I've seen, seen worse, and I think that's probably a DOT issue, even though I don't always agree with the DOT. But basically, from the corner up there, I'm not sure exactly per the map where the sign was, but you could see the sign down there. So it's, it is, it's not ideal, but I don't know that it's, would prevent something from, from being developed there. I know, you know, I empathize with the agricultural area, but also know that, you know, we've gotta provide housing, and that there's development that was on the Brooksdale, I believe it was, those lots are even smaller than, than these. These are a little bit oblong or longer, but it is, those lots were an acre. These are about an acre and, anywhere from acre and a quarter to about an acre and a half. So, you know, I empathize. I, I know that the folks in, in Staley don't want to change. I don't, I don't want to change either, where I live, but it's gonna change, and we have to do, make the, the best of it. He could do some other things in here that would put single wide trailers in there. I know there are concerns with crime, but this, that area there is on a main thoroughfare for the most part coming into Staley, so I don't know that it's gonna deteriorate the neighborhood substantially along with that road, just for those, those six units. And they, you know, manufactured housing is, is something that is more for, but it is, it looks good. I was in, worked for a gentleman for several, about twenty-five years ago, and there's a world of difference between now and even then. Would I like to see something different in there? Sure. But we also have to honor the rights of those that own the property. We can try to, as much as we can, let the neighborhood know what's going on. We're trying to do that tomorrow night at Eastern Randolph, to get the community involved in, there's gonna be growth. It's a matter of where's that growth gonna be? And that's what that meeting tomorrow night, so I encourage everybody to come tomorrow night. But I, I just don't know that there's enough to, other than with the buffering, I think that's important, especially for the church. I don't know if we wanna define that buffer any further than just the twenty-five or fifty feet. I'm not sure what kind of vegetation's in there. I wouldn't wanna take out and make it too thin in there. I don't know if you would have, you know, some sort of added vegetative buffer in there. But that would be one, just kinda my, my thought, is twenty-five gonna be enough to, to screen through there without something additional?
Fifty.
You think fifty would be enough, or...
I think fifty's really appropriate, yes.
Well, I mean, should we ask the landowner if he feels like he can live with fifty?
We can do that at the end. Let's finish all of our comments.
All right. Those are, those are kinda my comments. I don't know what the best suggestions of the board are.
Well, my thoughts are a lot of times, and in dealing with these issues, twenty-five is short. When you get out there, twenty-five's short. When you're talking about a buffer, a fifty-foot buffer is more appropriate than twenty-five. Other comments? Is there, is there a motion?
I, I think we probably need to ask the applicant if he, if he would consent to a fifty-foot buffer, and if not, I think it'd be appropriate, yes.
Would you accept a fifty-foot buffer next to the church?
Do you have the survey?
You pull up the site plan.
Yes.
Are you referring to the above areas adjacent to the church or the parking lot as well? Are you considering the whole side?
I would think the whole.
That side.
The whole side. Or, I don't know, yeah.
Yep. My thoughts there, gentlemen and ladies, is, is the fact that I've seen it... My thoughts are, gentlemen and ladies, is, is the fact that, I've seen it, where we're, in the past, the 25, 25 is not a very wide strip of land. If you're really wanting to help out, you're really talking about 50. You're, you're accepting that?
So the applicant has indicated that he would amend the application and accept that for a 50-foot buffer on the eastern property line as shown on the site plan?
Yes.
Mr. Mangum, do you, Mr. Mangum is in the process of amending that application, because we don't, the county commissioners don't sit in this seat often, hearing appeals as much as they used to in the past, I should say. Mr. Mangum will revise that application, the applicant actually has to sign that before you guys vote on it. So it's not something that can happen tomorrow, he has to sign that tonight before you actually vote on it.
Do we need the motion, including that, and then add...
Yes, yes, that will be a part of it, but you need to hold off on voting that until the amended application has been printed. That's, Mr. Mangum does a great job of bringing his laptop and amending that, and so he does a really good job with that.
I would say too, that, that this board is hearing it new. You know, what happened at the planning board really doesn't have any impact on our decision tonight, we hear it from the, from the start. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, there's no, you know, inherent bias or anything that the board has.
Right.
Do we have a motion for consideration?
Let's, we have to hold off.
I thought you said do that.
No, let's, we have, we have to, we have to wait until the applicant, application is signed.
My sense is that while we don't care for change, that the problem with the housing is not what it looks like now, it's what it looks like 20 or 30 years from now, as the one gentleman said, after it's gone through two or three owners. And I know, I mean, I've, I noticed those things since I became commissioner, and we were doing things like this, and, I mean, I can take you over just right off of 85, between Chapel Hill, the Chapel Hill area and Durham area, just right off the interstate there, if you're looking closely, you know, you can see these, you know, dilapidated, I mean, they're, you know, they are the single, the single wides from years ago, but they've been, you know, abandoned, and so they, there's a lot of junk around them, and I don't know what, I don't know what we do about that. I mean, I, I don't know what we do about that, because they're sold to someone, and then they're sold to someone else, and like I said, these, you know, these, these look good. And they provide, they provide a home for a couple, and maybe one or two children in three bedrooms. And I did notice that one of the homes there, I don't think you have a picture of it, but one of these homes back on that side had a, had a wire, a chain fence around it, so they had their yard fenced in. And I can imagine that in the future, that people will take great pride in these homes, and they will, you know, they may have gardens, gosh, they get full sun, if the soil's good, they may have gardens out in front, or, you know, play equipment, and they'll be able to call it home, and they'll be able to afford something for less than $350,000. But, you know, I'm with you, the problem is not now, as much as it is 30 years from now, or 40. And maybe that's something we as a county can talk about at some point in time, but...
The developer, Mr. Davis, has signed a new request showing a 50-foot buffer along that east or southeast borderline right there.
Mr. Chairman, given that fact, I'll make the motion to approve this rezoning request to the rezoned, specified parcels on the rezoning application, and the map amendment ordinance to the requested zoning district based on the determination consistency and findings of reasonable and public interest statements that are included in the planning board agendas submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion, to be included in the minutes as well as the site plans, with any and all, all other agreed upon revisions, which would be the buffer. Also incorporated in the motion, that the request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Very good. Alright.
You have to read it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion. Those in favor of letting it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and it passes. Alright. Alright, thank all of you for your participation tonight, and hopefully see some of you tomorrow night. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
You are adjourned.